...clock, I'd like to call the meeting's order. Ask you to put in the state of the budget.
I want to leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeHaid, ask you if you call the roll three.
Harleen Kane?
Here.
Ray Eppete?
Here.
Bill Luken?
Here.
Mark Meyer?
Here.
Bob Nelson?
Here.
Sam Powers?
Here.
Ron Richards?
Here.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Here.
Thank you.
And thank you, we do have a forum. I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It moved and seconded, we approved the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved, and again, I remind the council that if there is any items on the agenda that we will be voting on, that you have a conflict of interest, please notify the council prior to the vote. Thank you. You have been your packages the minutes from the April 1st council meeting, I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 1st council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. You have in your packages bills in between of $165,089.68. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between at $165,089.68.
I'll second that.
It moved and seconded to approve the bills in between, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bills in between are approved. Item B, you have current claims listed for $40,569.72. I'd ask for a motion to approve those current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims along $40,569.72.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve the current claims, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those current claims are approved. And we do have Wells Fargo credit card charges for $6,303.35. I'd ask for a motion to approve those credit card charges.
I'll make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit cards for $6,303.35.
I'll second.
They've moved and seconded to approve those charges, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those charges are approved. Next item on our agenda is communications from the public, are there any communications from the public? Okay, if you would come forward, yeah, there's a microphone there, I'd ask that you identify yourself. And speak your communication, please.
Lift the button at the very beginning.
Harlan, can you come and double check and make sure?
It's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's on now, I just turned it off. No, I know it was off, I have told it.
Anyway, I'm probably looking at. Couple of things, one is I wanted to know what the city is doing, going to do with this lot they purchased. Down here at the stoplight, I understand, I was told that the city bought this lot, used to be started? In the process of buying that lot?
The city has not bought that lot.
I was told that they were going to buy that lot, is that not true?
That not has, that has not been officially decided, the council has not voted on that.
Okay, and the reason I ask, because a couple of years ago when the DOT decided not to build on that lot or use that lot, they said they were going to put it up for public auctions. And I know at least three businessmen in town, myself included, were interested in bidding on this lot, and I would want to know why the city would be buying real estate in the first place, and what you might be thinking about using it for in the second place. Any thoughts?
Oh, that has been in discussion in our parks and recs and public works as to what the opportunities are, and until there comes a plan forward, that will come to the council for either to approve it or send it back to the state saying that we denied the option.
Okay, thanks on that one. The other thing I have, I think is of public interest, and I don't know if the mayor has shared with anyone else, but a while back I picked up an infection at Evans' Plunge, which eventually led me to an emergency room visit, where upon the emergency room physician gave me a 30 percent chance of live, to live by his diagnosis, and I would have been 0 percent the next day or two if I hadn't shown up. And basically, I wasted all my membership being contagious for a while and recovering for a while, and I thought, you know, maybe the city ought to at least reinstate my membership, because I caught this little infection at the Evans' Plunge. So, anyway, that's my two cents, and you know, I have money to be spending on buying real estate, should be able to offer a membership or something. You know, everybody was telling me I could sue the city, well, I'm not a suing guy. You know, when the regional hospital admitted to screwing up a procedure and killing my father, I could sue them too, but I don't do that. I just thought fair was fair, so that's my two cents.
All right.
And I do have a question for the, first one would be, how are you sure that you caught the infection at Evans' Plunge, how did you make that connection?
Well, it started with athlete's foot. I bought a membership, and after about the third or fourth visit, I came home with athlete's foot.
Okay.
You know, first time in my life, I was an athlete, I was in hundreds of lockers rooms thousands of times, but I believe I caught it in the steam room, I don't think that's a secret, and pretty obvious that that's the only kind of public place I had been. All right?
Thank you.
Any other communications from the public? Hearing none, we'll introduce Don Johnson, and Don, we're going to have to interrupt you in about two minutes to do a public hearing, but you can maybe get us started on the quarter of the report for the library.
Yes, and you interrupt me, because you know I love to talk about my library. I'm going to start off with the state report, I believe that everyone got in their packets a copy of the state librarians report that I have to turn in at the end of the month, and later on in the meeting you're going to vote on whether to approve that or not. There are a couple of things that I wanted to point out about that report that I'm really proud of. I also gave you this evening just an information packet where it took some of those numbers and turned them into a little pamphlet, and I left some on the counter for anyone that wants to pick that up. I wanted to go to the services department, and the internet, the users of internet computers was 19,654 last year. The state library was high enough to choose our library as a program library to use a Wi-Fi counting program, it's called Who's Wi-Fi? We got that for free, and with that counter, we were able to ascertain that Wi-Fi users in our library amounted to about 20,000 people. So, the numbers that I turned in for just using the hardwired, the hardwired Wi-Fi computers was about 19-something, but the people that come in with their own computers, with their own phones, and Sunday afternoon in front of the library using our Wi-Fi amounted to about 20,000 people according to our counter. So, 40,000 people use our internet every year, logging into that. Something that...
Excuse me, now, the time's 7:10, so I'll interrupt. I would now open a public hearing, and what we will be considering in this public hearing is an application for a temporary alcoholic beverage license to be used at the Mammoth Site during their secrets of the sinkhole event, and that will be held on April 26th this year. I would open that public hearing at this time and ask if there are any comments from the audience concerning whether this temporary alcoholic beverage license should be granted or not. I see no comments from the audience, are there any comments from, or questions from the council? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve that temporary alcoholic beverage license at this time.
Make a motion to approve temporary alcohol beverage license application from the Mammoth Site to be used at 1800 U.S. Highway 18 bypass Mammoth Site during their secrets of the sinkhole event on April 26th, 2018.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that application, and Misty inferred that the public hearing was proposed prior to that motion, okay. Any questions, comments, or discussion from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries, and we wish the Mammoth Site well on their secrets of the sinkhole event. Don, you're backed up, sorry for the interruption.
Not a problem. No problem, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to what the library's up to. I kind of wanted to, with the information I gave about the Wi-Fi, up until we got this program from the state, we had no way of knowing just how many people were using our internet that weren't actually logging in, and we found this number to be very surprising, that we had that many people using our library without logging into something in our building. The next thing I want you to refer to is in page 10 of this little packet where it says selected key ratios, it's a comparison form for what our library did in 2018, what it did in 2017, and then the statewide average for 2017, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but I needed to point out that the state average for local government operating revenue per capita, the state average is only $32.76 to run an average library in South Dakota, ours is $72.70, so that's about double the money. But we think it's worth it, and I think that these numbers might show just what we do with our double the money. Registered borrowers per capita, the average in South Dakota is .47, the number in Hot Springs is 1.67, so that's tripled the numbers for registered users per capita. Library visits per capita, the average in the state is 4.7, ours is 13.9. Again, we almost triple our numbers. The total circulation per capita, and the average for the state is 7.6, ours is 15.9. So, we're right at double, right at double the numbers there. And our public internet use per capita is 1.3 for the average in the state, ours is 5.7. So, we're really excited that, yes, it takes a little more money than the average state library, you know, some of them is big as Sioux Falls, some of them is smaller than Edgemont, but we come up with double or triple the numbers for service toward the community with the amount of money that we get to run the library with. Is there any questions on the state report that you guys got that you want to ask me about?
Council, do you have any, any questions?
I do.
Yes, Bob.
I have a bunch of y'all.
Oh, great.
That's why I hesitate. Page two.
Page two. Yes.
Staff paid by non-library resources, or non-library resources.
That would be our experienced work worker. We have a part-time employee that comes in, and she works through the Experience Works Program, and everything that she does, they foot the bill for. So, we have a someone that works 25 hours a week that we lead as the city into to do county work.
Page six. 2019 supplemental internet questions, the first item, looks like there's more in that box than we're able to read.
The question was a check one of these questions, and we have both landlines and public Wi-Fi. I think you meant the second question, down under 2019, that's what it was.
Down under the 2019 supplemental internet questions.
Oh, I see, okay.
The response seems to be a portion of the full response.
Okay, it's asking us if they, if we would like to replace, are you interested in replacing your current website or setting up a basic library website that your staff can easily manage and update? And I responded that the functionality of our website works well for us, and we are not interested in having the state of South Dakota company help us design our website.
Thank you. Page seven.
And on that note, our website is a donated site, a person who, Diva Lynn Cummings, she takes care of that site for us, and it's a donation to the library. Seven.
Under library board information, the last question, in that block of questions, same question, response seems to be just a portion of the full response.
Does the library board need training in any of the following areas? And my, and it had a list of items that I could check off, and my response was, not at this time, the library doesn't need any help with budget library policies, strategic planning, and all of the questions that we were able to check off. The reason I checked no is that our library board is required every year to do a certain amount of hours in training, and I already get help from the state library to satisfy the training that our board directors has to take. So, I couldn't no because I didn't think that I needed somebody from the state library to specifically address that, because we already have a good communication with them on training for the staff and for their board.
And then the final two I had, the highlight that we've already covered on page ten, the financial measures and the service measures, spoken to the reason that the numbers are double.
Yeah, the average, they figure the average library in South Dakota could be anything from an Edgemont to a Sioux Falls, so the average, average number is kind of, I know, you know.
Thank you.
All right, well, I do have a little bit more I'd like to talk to you about. We have a couple of programs coming up, one the end of April, Black Hill Stagecoach and Freight Wagon routes, we're going to have a, you'll find this on our website, it's posted around town, but we're going to have Mr. Khan come in and speak to us on this topic in the evening at the library on April 30th. And on May 22nd, I'm going to have Carol M. Brewst, she was at one time worked at the Hot Springs Star, she now lives in Nebraska, she's going to come in and give a little talk about the book that she's written, and it takes place in Black Hills, so we're excited for her to come visit with that. We're doing our regular programmings the last few months, we've got Story Times, Breakout Boxes, Legos Movies, Maker Space, Game Day, our computer classes, I'm continuing to take programs to the Seven Sisters every month, and I am proud to say that seven young men have completed the coding class that we have for them, and we are searching this summer to find the next level for them. This first level that they've done was free through Google, we're kind of hoping that we would get some gear and get space two started for us. But yes, we will be doing another coding class to encourage those gentlemen to continue their coding career. I've had five proctors this, during the fall and spring, three of them are high school students that are taking college level courses, and they come to my, our office in my office and do their proctoring, their testing for those college level classes. I've got one mother who's working on her teaching degree, she's gone back to school, and she utilizes our offices, and I've got one I'm real proud to say, I haven't seen this gentleman since Christmas, and he came in today, and I said, where have you been? We haven't seen you for like months, and he goes, oh, I graduated, I have a bachelor's degree in business now, and I said, well, we've been missing you because you've been in here basically every day for two years, you know, and doing proctoring and stuff. So, we are really proud of this gentleman for getting his bachelor's degree, he's, he's an older gentleman, and he's got a lot of work left in him, and he's ready to take on the world around here. Summer reading is coming up in June, you've got a little work marker, bookmark up there, the theme this year is universe of stories, we're going to talk about space, and we're not only going to talk about it, we're going to do some fun things. It's, we're going to kick it off on June 1st, Saturday at the airport, they're having a fly-in, and the library's going to be out there to help them. We're going to take our entire signup list and send them a personal invitation to come out and check out the airport, because that's what you better do before you get to space. You'll have air balloons, you'll have wires, you'll have Segal Proct planes, we're going to get them started out, just how it is that you get there. I'm real excited, I've been to the last year for work meetings, and we've had a lot of fun finding what we're going to do. This year, we're going to have online signup, we're going to try that. A man had found a real nice program where they can just go in and do a little one-page signup, put the class they're going to take, it's really simple, we can download it into an Excel program, and have our class rosters, rosters and everything made. We've talked with City Hall about doing this with the regular summer reading signup, and it's, we've still got to, I say we, they've got to work some things out in that we don't charge anything, so at the bottom of the form, there's no add your credit card, do this, that, and the other. In order for the regular summer rec to do that, there's got to be a couple of hoops to go through, but we're hoping that ours will be a nice start for getting online signup for summer, summer rec program. The first week, we're going to have a planetarium come in, we'll set it up here on the stage, kids will be able to go in, lay down, there's a little program that goes through, in the meantime, we'll have stuff going on out here for those that are in the planetarium, I think it's like a seven to 10-minute program that we're going to bring in. We're going to have a speaker from the South Dakota School of Mines, she's been a NASA scientist, she's going to talk to the kids and do some hands-on projects on what it takes to get to the moon. We're going to have a moonwalk on the 18th of June is the full moon, and we're coordinating with Chamber of Commerce and businesses downtown to have the kids walk through downtown, find our posters, use the little UV light, answer the quiz, you know, figure out the puzzle, and we want to have, we're going to have a program over at Centennial Park where we're going to serve some food, have some music, have a little moonwalk on the full moon in June, which is like the summer solstice almost. This year, we doubled our classes because of the amount of kids we've had in the last few years with the help of our part-time person. We're now going to have, offer 11 classes a week, which amounts to 44 class times in a four-week period. But we'll, if we make our numbers like we did last year, we're going to have 300, 300 people signed up, so that's going to break down, keep busy for us. We were applying for two grants, one for $3,000, one for $1,000, we've not heard anything on either one of them, thank you for preapproving them, because the turnaround time is, is very short on those. We're fully confident that we can pull off a pretty decent experience for our children and our adults with the universe of stories, getting the grant, we've got a few things on the back burner that we want to pull out if we can get some extra grant money, so. The last thing I want to do is publicly acknowledge, acknowledge Andrea Norton, she was a lifetime library user, and the last three, four years of her life, she was a dedicated volunteer in our summer reading program, and we were all heartbroken to hear about her accident, and we wish the family well. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, and you know, are there any comments from the council? With Don, it's obvious that there's a lot of things going on, and we appreciate the hard work you and your staff put in. Couple of things that you did not mention that I picked up from the report and your brochure, is that we have 127 children's programs that you all do at the library, and I think that's still very important, that our kids started out early, and the other thing that I think is really impressive is the registered borrowers, 5,600 and some, that's pretty good for a population of the town officially of 3,500 people. So, we're not serving just Hot Springs, but we're serving all of our, our local area, and another thing that I think is important that to note is the annual program attendance is 2,800 and some people, and that's, again, a significant amount of our community that's taking part in programs at the library. So, when, we may pay a little bit more for library services, we are also getting a lot more, particularly based on the statistics that you shared with us compared to the rest of the state. We have an outstanding library, and we're very thankful for that, it is a community access, so thank you very much for the work you do.
And thank you for your support. Thank you, Don.
Okay, we'll move on in our agenda. The next item is personnel, I'd like to take items A through F and H through O, and approve those personnel actions, we'll take G individually. So, I'd take accept a motion to approve A through F and H through O.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through F and H through O, seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those actions are approved. Item G, the item listed there for Dan Van Bibber is the starting wage should be changed to $9.35 per hour v. the $9.50, and I would approve that, ask for a motion to approve that with the change to $9.35, to $9.35 per hour.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel action G, changing the $9.50 per hour to $9.35 per hour, effective for 13, 19.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that personnel action, are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on, committee reports, admin and finance, Bob?
The next item in the finance committee meeting will be base six.
The next item in the Finance Committee meeting will be May 6th, 1:00 at City Hall.
Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
The next meeting will be Thursday, April 25th at 8:00 AM at the airport.
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 9th of May, 7:00 PM at the U.S.A.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Harleen?
The next meeting will be made first, private clock at the library.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
I had to leave early because of the storm to catch a plane, so I did not get the committee report. I will do a drill report next council meeting. Our next meeting will be the 2nd Thursday of May.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation and Beautification, Marty?
Parks Committee met on April 2nd at 3:00 PM at the Miller Civic Center. In addition, myself and attendance were Kathy Renn, Barbara Walters, Dwayne Stanley, Jerry Coligan, Preston Gable from the Mammoth Site was visiting the Parks Committee as well. Preston informed us that they are looking to apply for a $50,000 grant from the Mallekules Area Community Foundation. Mammoth Site wants to propose a partnership with themselves, the city, and Hot Springs High School. The project would be potentially up to five sculptures with an Ice Age and a Mammoth theme. Locations could be determined throughout Hot Springs City Parks. The sculptures would be made of sheet metal and would be designed, cut, and fabricated at the Mammoth Site and welded. The proposal is to do the welding at the Hot Springs High School. There were no concerns that the project would interfere with the proposed Veterans Hero Sculpture Project along the Freedom Trail. And the committee was unanimous in giving the green light for the project. First step is for the Mammoth Site to submit a letter of intent and they will follow up with more details in the near future. Kathy Renn reported that the open gym and pickleball at the Miller Center have been very successful and well-attended. Summer Rec is currently looking for instructors for, got quite a list for art, volleyball, baseball, softball, bowling, tee ball, and flight football. And there might even be another one out there that I missed. You know, anyone who's interested in being an instructor for Summer Rec, please contact City Hall. There was an extensive discussion about ongoing maintenance issues in the park. After clarification, the park, we are compiling a list of jobs which could be done by volunteers. The plan is to communicate and update this list with Art on at least a bi-weekly basis. There's also brief discussion regarding the installation of new basketball pools about the park and the possibility of finding a local contractor who could fabricate a pole that would go over the fence rather than be installed on the inside. If that does not pan out, then the plan is to concrete the inside to install the basketball pools. Next meeting, don't have the date written down, but it will be the first Tuesday after our first council meeting in May at 3:00 PM at the Miller Civic Center.
Okay, thanks, Marty. Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison?
Planning and zoning meets this Wednesday, 7:00 PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill?
The next meeting will be this Wednesday, April 17th at 2:00 PM at City Hall. And Mayor, with your permission, I've got a note that I've composed regarding some observations and opinions on the Police Department that I'd like to read.
Bill, I'd appreciate if you would read that. I think that would be very informative for the community and for the council.
Simply titled, Hot Springs Police Department, Public Safety Chair Opinions and Observations. I took office as Ward One, or Ward Two, sorry, Alderman on July 3rd, 2018, and was appointed by the mayor to chair the Public Safety Committee and chaired that first meeting on August 13th, One of my personal goals was to gain an objective understanding of the duties and actions of our police force and the individual officers. To accomplish this, I have reviewed the monthly statistics regarding calls, contacts, and responses. I've done ride-logs with Officers Jennifer Winscott, Zach Schaefer, Austin Chafin, Nat Cronin, and Captain Wainman. To date, I have not written with Officer Joe Hayashi. I have participated at my expense in the annual handgun qualification live-fire exercise. I've had a number of one-on-one meetings with Chief Close discussing everything from budget issues, expenditures, departmental policies and practices, to body camera recordings. I've purchased a scanner at my wife's delight so I can listen to the types of calls and interactions between all of our officers, Fall River County Dispatch, Fall River County deputies. And as part of public safety, I've sat with other members to discuss issues such as new lease car colors and markings and requests to change ordinances. The result of all of this is, in my opinion, is a pretty good set of objective and subjective data regarding the quality of our police department and the individuals that make up that department. Based on these inputs, I offer the following observations and opinions. First of all, each member of the department has a varied and unique set of strengths and are a benefit to the department and to the city of Hot Springs. The department is appropriately active and very productive. Our officers know where to spend their time based on the time of day. Our officers are not only courteous, but kind and respectful. The cooperation with each other and with the Fall River County deputies is good and proactive. When they hear something going on, they don't wait to be called, but offer assistance. Radio exchanges with the Fall River County dispatchers are professional, but also acceptably friendly. These folks are a team and the teamwork is obvious. If vocal attitudes could be measured and graded, the responses on the radio would be D-plus or better. Professionalism is a common behavior and attitude. The training I've witnessed is extremely professional. Though this is a small department, the training I've witnessed is all business. And I say that because sometimes in a small group, things can get so informal that the professionalism can sometimes not be what it should be. But that's not, not what I've witnessed at all. Our officers respond routinely to potentially dangerous and/or emotionally disturbing situations and they do so with great care, concern, and professionalism. So many times, each officer has gone the extra mile to treat a citizen with dignity, even if the circumstances were such that dignity could have been set aside and they could have simply just done their job. When bringing issues to the Public Safety Committee, Chief Close and his team have become well-prepared to present their issues, but are also willing to listen to the questions from the committee and address those questions with well-thought-out points and not emotional flailing because we asked a question or challenged a position. When a citizen brings an issue to public safety that Chief Close can act on, he has promptly and properly acted on the issue and so far has achieved the desired results. Am I saying we have perfect officers and a perfect police department? The fact that we employ human beings says that they are not perfect, but then again, none of us are. What I am saying is that from what I have heard, what I've experienced and seen, we in Hot Springs are fortunate to have a group of dedicated, hard-working, and professional police officers serving our community. And I'm personally proud of each one and the job they're doing. And as one last point, if you find yourself driving in our community and one of our officers is following you and attempting to pull you over, there is a valid reason. And one thing I would like to say, I wrote this or decided to write this in late March prior to the fatal accident out on a mile west of town. And since I've written this, there have been a number of things go on and nothing that I have seen, heard, or witnessed caused me to want to change a single word in this. Again, it's my opinion, it's my observation. I'm very, very proud of Chief Close, his entire department, and the job they're doing. And like I said, I think we are very, very fortunate to have the team of police officers that we have serving us. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Bill, and appreciate the effort that went into documenting your observations. Moving on in committee reports, Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on April 9th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Crazy, Misty, Kurt Seacrest with the Street Department, and myself for present. There are a number of folks from the community that also joined us. They had various things they won't talk to us about. First old business item for the council, I included an information side, some information regarding the disputed sewer water bill that we've talked about the last two Public Works meetings. Matt and I have logged another one that I'll talk about in new business. It's pretty much dominated the conversation of the last two Public Works meetings. The disputed water bill, the committee continued discussion on the disputed water sewer bill from the March 26th Public Works meeting. Tracy provided a copy of the meter test report from the City of Rapid City Water Division for our review as part of your bag. After looking at all the available documents, the committee agreed not to approve the disputed water sewer bill request. And I need to say that we weren't looking for a reason to dispute it. It's a large amount. It's not something that as an individual user, I would be happy about paying. It is a commercial bill, so I would expect it to be a little larger. But everything we looked at, the steps that the city took to determine whether that meter was faulty, their interaction with the user is what we expect from our employees and I'm proud of what they went through. But because of the amount and the time that it took to arrive at a decision to not approve the disputed bill, I thought you folks needed to have all the information that we looked at so you could look at it and either agree or disagree with the decision. But the committee was unanimous in not approving that disputed water. Prairie Hills Transit, we talked about that. It's been a regular topic for us. Tracy shared his cost estimates for the two possible bus barn locations. The estimated cost for site preparation for the sewer plant, which we pretty much have determined is not the ideal location, but that would be about $41,000. And the cost for the landfill would be between $7,000 and $8,000. We'll continue those discussions at Public Works and at Prairie Hills Transit. I mentioned last time that the storm drain near Carquest, we've been looking at that. Tracy's met with the local contractor and worked on the storm drain will begin soon. So we're excited about that. The 26th Street Water Project is coming along. The city crews are laying pipe and they're building up the road. The other item was a new business item that took up a lot of our heat. The residents of Abil 5, south of 11th Street spoke to the committee and asked the city to provide access to their property from 11th Street. Their property isn't actually on 11th Street, but about one block east of 11th Street on what should be Catholic Avenue. They were recently notified through their adjoining property owner's lawyer, the access they're currently using is on private property. Access to the property should be via Catholic Avenue, but Catholic Avenue hasn't been developed by the city. The Public Works Committee agreed to work with the residents to provide that correct access to the property. That cementable road work by the city will be necessary to provide that access. There's one other party that's involved in what would need to go on up there, but we've been actively talking with them, trying to work out a resolution to get these people access to their property. We also had someone, a resident in the Coldberg area, spoke to the city about excessive dust that's being created by silenced vehicles entering and exiting the rock quarry above Coldberg Residence. Property owner acknowledged the city isn't creating a problem, but is asking for help from the city to get silenced to correct the problem. Committee agreed the city would look into the problem and do what it can to help correct the dust problem.
Ray?
Say that. You want to add?
No comment on that. I know further discussion with the lawyer and Public Works and maybe we can find a solution.
All right. Next Public Works meeting will be April 23rd, 3:00 PM at City Hall.
Okay, thanks, Bob. And Bob, if you haven't checked your email, I did send a letter to that resident regarding the water bill or will. I plan on drafting a letter to send to that resident. I would appreciate your coordination on that. And the reason that this is brought up to the council, to have the facts, if that individual wants to challenge that decision, the next place would be to the council and we want to make sure the council is informed on that. Again, Bob, I just want to thank you personally for the helpful and aggressive nature you've handled the problem on Catholic Avenue. Appreciate the facts that you gathered and the personal interests that you've taken in getting that issue resolved. And we'll continue to work on the best problems. Southern Hills Economic Development, Marty?
Chetco Board will meet next, this Friday, April 19th, at noon at Winter Surrock Conference
Okay, the Southern Hills Golf Course Committee, we did have our first meeting back on April 8th. Old business, one of the things that, looking into is the possibility of asking the schools to pay for using the golf course. Many of the Vokules High School schools that golf on courses do pay and that's something that Dave Merrill will bring up with the school. We didn't have any additional information on that. In their new business, we established that punch cards must have an expiration date on them. They'd be valid only for one season. And there's been some questions and comments about that in the past and we wanted to make sure that all the individuals that purchase those understand that. There will be opportunities if, for example, someone buys a punch card and for some reason, medically or some other reason can't fulfill the opportunity to use those, the Golf Committee will review those on a case-by-case basis. There are many new USGA rules and some of those will entail some different markings on the course. Those rule changes, Jason would like any recommendations from the committee as to how to mark the course with an intent to continue to speed up play. That's one of the goals of the new rules and also our marking the course. In the golf course itself, Jason reported that there were some areas of winter kilt that are minor and they should be reestablished as soon as the soil temperature rises, they get some seed down and get those areas cleaned up. They're also working now that they've got staff, the main focus early on will be cleanup before the daily mowing and watering has to begin. And Jason is also working on a agricultural plan, which helps paint a picture of what the course does, why they do it. And once that's complete, that'll be available for the committee and to members and for those interested to review. For the clubhouse itself, Kathy suggested that we run some specials on Monday and Wednesday after 4:00 PM. Those are days that we don't have any kind of league play and there are low and they're low use type periods. And by running this special, we might be able to attract some additional golfers. So, that was brought up and favorably received. The next meeting will be the second Monday of the month, May 13th. And if there are any questions, Jason is the one that does the agenda. And if anyone wants anything placed on that agenda, go ahead and give him a call. And that concludes the Golf Course Advisory Committee Report. Unfortunately, I have not been out enough to really check the course conditions, and I plan to do that at least a couple times a week. Moving on to Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Now, Volunteer Fire Department met April 9th, 7:00 PM. That's the fire department. They recently, pardon your, they recently implemented a program called Item Responding through a test trial. Basic operation is this, dispatch, dial calls all firefighter cell phones. Firefighter can respond on the phone if he's able or not able to respond. If responding, they can indicate how long to arrive at station or instant. They do this on their cellphone. Same time, they can download a Google map with the location and direction to the instant. Responsible appear on and monitor at the station so the incident commander will know what resources are available to put down in a specific green. This was voted on and accepted for a three-year period. The chief reminded all personnel that essential training needs to be completed ASAP. This is for you to avoid having to travel several nights a week to different locations around the Tri-County area possibly, until the training is completed. Wildland Fire Emergency Training will be available. Days are still to be determined. Quentin Ford, that officer introduced, ordered him for a one-year probation. He is a trained firefighter from customer. Their annual audit was successfully completed. Next meeting will be the 14th of May, 2019. It's approximately volunteer fire department, 7:00 PM.
Okay, Ron, thank you for the thorough report. Comprehensive plan, Coordinator Sam?
I'll give a report.
Okay. Moving on into ordinances, we do have tonight the second reading of ordinance 1198, revising our zoning ordinance to allow plant unit developments. And we've talked about this, Ted. This was brought up last council meeting and approved the first reading that will allow mixed type of structures, apartments, duplexes, single-family homes in a planned development usually designed by an architect or a landscape architect to ensure that these all can exist compatibly within a certain development area. I would ask for a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1198.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1198, revising Chapter 27-A zoning ordinance to include plant unit developments to allow for development subdivisions with mixed types of structures or uses, apartment, duplexes, single-family homes.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the second reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Allison, I know you've been involved with the Planting Zoning Commission. What is their recommendation again?
Yeah, it has to support through the Planting Zoning.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the role, please.
Harley Kane?
Yes.
Ray Egathy?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbuck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. I think this is a step forward in helping us perhaps get some additional development here in Hot Springs. Before you also is the Resolution 2019-10. We recently approved the Mueller Civic Center rates, and we had an oversight on the half-day rates, and we needed to make those adjustments to ensure that half-day and full-day users are treated fairly. I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-10, a resolution to amend the Mueller Civic Center rates?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve Resolution 2019-10. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business. The first item of new business is to approve a temporary easement between the city and the Christensen's for a fence that was erected on the right-of-way up on Doran Road that rodded leads to our water tower. In talking with our attorney this morning, we would like to revise that temporary easement. So, instead of approving it tonight, I would ask for a motion to table that until we can get that revised to ensure that it is a more temporary situation, that if development does occur in that area and we need to expand Doran Road, we have a legal right to ask that that fence be moved.
I make a motion to table the temporary easement between the city and Julian William Christensen for a fence that was erected with the city's right-of-way.
Second. It's been moved in seconded that we table this. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion and discussion to approve a request to waive the Mueller Civic Center auditorium and kitchen rental fees for a fundraiser for flood relief efforts in South Dakota and Nebraska. This would be sponsored by Morning Sunshine and be held on Saturday, May 4th. I would ask for a motion to approve the request to waive those fees for this fundraising effort.
I'll make a motion to approve a request to waive Mueller Civic Center auditorium, $205, kitchen, $105 rental fees for a fundraiser for flood relief efforts in South Dakota and Nebraska, sponsored by Morning Sunshine, to be held on Saturday, May 4th.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded that we do request, or do we waive these fees? Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Just so that you know, while you, when you came here, it wasn't in your packet. I did set up a sheet that we got a description from the books at Morning Sunshine on exactly what they're planning on doing and what they're going to be in the money.
Okay, thank you. And again, as we all know, the suffering and difficulties that residents have gone through in those communities, particularly in the smaller towns, we, any little bit that we can help out certainly helps. Raise spirits and also can maybe physically encourage and create some opportunities to assist some people. I know today it kind of hit home. We had a resident come into City Hall that needed some help that had been removed from their home in Nebraska. He was looking for some help, and thank you, Kim, for getting them pointed in the right direction. Motion has been made in seconded to approve this request. I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks for coming, so. Item C is a possible motion discussion to approve the waiving of three-part, park application fees for the 2019 Main Street Arts and Crafts. Again, I would ask for a motion to table this until that has had an opportunity to go through the admin finance for that committee to make a recommendation to you as a council.
I make a motion to table waiving the three-part applications fees for the 2019 Main Street Arts and Crafts fair scheduled for June 28th.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded that we approve waiving this park application fee until we can get a recommendation from admin finance. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, you heard Don give our 2018 Library Annual Report. I'd ask for a motion to approve that report.
Make a motion to approve and accept the 2018 Library Annual Report.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. We accept the 2018 Annual Report. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I also have in your packages a school, city school facility use agreement. This is the same agreement that we approved last year. I would ask for a motion to approve that facility use agreement.
I'll make a motion to renew the city school facility use agreement effective May 1st, 2019.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we approve this school-city facility use agreement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have in your packages also a taxi license application from Monroe Taxi Service. We have checked with the chief of police. There have been no incidents. They have paid the appropriate fees. I would ask for a motion to approve that license application.
I'll make a motion to, as soon as I find it, I'll make the motion.
Item M?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the 2019 taxi license application from Monroe Taxi Service?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that we approve this taxi license application. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, we're looking to purchase and approve the use of contingency funds to pay for firewall replacement at City Hall, Evans Plunge, the airport, police department, wastewater treatment plant. This is a item recommended by our IT professionals. And obviously, we've had some issues with malware and so forth, and it's another part of the solution to that. The reason that we're replacing this, several years ago, there was a decision made not to make yearly updates, and the malware, the coverage or the firewall that we do have is outdated and is not possible to update. So, it's important that we get the latest data to keep those that have a habit of probing weaknesses in municipality websites an opportunity to de-bog from getting into the hot springs. And those would be 2019 contingency funds of about $4,896 to do that. And also, Kim would thank you if you would also approve the purchase of a laptop that works. So, I'd ask for a motion to approve those purchases.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of and approve the 2019 contingency funds to pay for firewall replacement at City Hall, Evans Plunge, airport, and police department wastewater treatment plant for a cost of $4,896 with two years' coverage, and $575 to replace city administrator laptop. Contingency transfer resolution will follow a future meeting.
Second. It's been moved in seconded that make those purchases. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? I know, Bob, this was discussed in admin finance. Is there any recommendation from that committee?
Admin finance recommends purchases.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have a motion and discussion to set a public hearing at our next meeting at 7:00 to 10:00 PM for a temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Wine Walk event that will take place on May 24th, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and various locations downtown. I would ask for a motion to approve that setting, that public hearing.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on 5/6/19 at 7:10 PM for three temporary alcoholic beverage license applications from the following businesses for the Wine Walk event on 5/24/19. Chamber of Commerce at the Morris Grant Gallery, Cultural Development Organization at Black Hills Books and Treasures, and Chautauqua Artisans Market at their location.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded that we set that public hearing. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing will be set. We also have in your packages an application from Golden West for permit to install some telephone and cable TV service, fiber optic cables. You'll notice in your packages, the red lines that go underneath Coldbrook Avenue and Hotbrook Canyon Road are boring. They will not be damaging the pavement in those areas. And the yellow lines, the highlighted lines alongside the road, are what they are alongside the road. They will be installing that, those fiber optic cables. I'd accept the motion to approve that application from Golden West.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from Golden West Telecommunications for a permit to occupy a city right-of-way intersection of Coldbrook Avenue and Hotbrook Canyon Road, the south of the Yellows Pumping Station, to install telephone, cable TV service, fiber optic cables.
It's been moved in seconded to approve that application from Golden West to install those cables. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in our agenda, finance officer report, Misty?
Thank you. Just a couple updates for the council. As you can see on this agenda and the first agenda in April, personnel, we're doing lots of hiring. Apologize for some of the errors. It's a lot to keep track of. We are still hiring in a couple areas, and so staffing up for the summer keeps us busy in the finance office with all the new hire reporting. I know that summer recreation is still hiring, as we mentioned earlier. Instructors make $10.40 an hour. Assistants are at line 35. And Evans Plunge is still looking for lifeguards. So, we're still hiring. We're still adding more people, so hopefully we keep your agenda as full as personnel in the next couple meetings too, as we get ready for a hopefully busy and eventful summer season. I did get notification today that I received a $150 scholarship to attend the Governmental Human Resource Association School. You approved that training a couple months ago. I had to have that in Google before I could apply for the scholarship. They only give out about $500 in scholarships. I was happy to receive that $150 to attend that training, and it's in June. It's right before the finance officer school, so it'll work out. I'll go to one and then the other. We had a really nice district meeting in Keystone. Thank you to the council members that attended and for the drive that Karen and I got up there. Appreciated the company and enjoy the evening. In the finance office, we're looking forward to getting some new furniture at the Federal Surplus site where they rarely get nice furniture. They got some nice furniture, so for about $325, both Karen and I are going to get new desks, four drawer lateral filing cabinet, and a new stand for our printer. So, I can't beat that price. I went and checked out the furniture this morning, and it's very nice quality, as long as you don't bang it up too much while it's sitting in that storage room. Well, we're ready to go get it. The annual report. The annual report will be ready for council by the next meeting. And May is open enrollment for all of our employees. So we'll stay busy in the finance office till the next meeting. I'll end up.
Okay, thank you. City Administrator, Kim.
Well, I've been busy in and out of a lot of different things, but I guess I just wanted to go over, I agree with Misty, we do need to have some seasonal positions filled. We're actually even looking for a seasonal position in our street department. So if you know of anybody who's interested in maybe taking that line of work as they get older, they should contact us at City Hall and we'll get them in touch with the right people. Wanted to remind everybody that free dump week is April 28th through May 4th. There's a, I think it's Key Pop Street Beautiful is having also a, they're organizing a citywide garage sale so that you can sign up for that.
That's the Herald.
Oh, the Herald's doing that. Great, okay, sorry Brett, the Herald's doing that. It just seemed like somebody smart doing that. It's a great idea for everybody to also enjoy that activity of cleaning up and cleaning out for spring, doing your spring cleanup. So look in the Herald for your, to be able to be advertised along with all the other garage sales during that time. I want to thank you, a great deal, for approving the computer. You are paying me at least a quarter of an hour every hour just sitting there watching it going, please, please. So it's processor, a little hamster was dying and so it's on to better times now, but everything worked out today. The last thing I wanted to just update everybody on is our new water district that we were been putting together. All the rock sawing has been completed. Water lines are going in. However, if you talk to anybody in that area who's expecting water soon, we have had a series of events. Two broken water lines that we've been repairing. And during the winter, we had a couple of really bad freezes through water lines that we're now going back and repairing those as well. Things that are directly affecting people's ability to have water service now versus getting new water service installed. So we have had some delays, but our crew should be back on it shortly. So if you have anybody that asks you about that, it's been a series of unfortunate events. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thanks. And as far as the mayor's report, one, a couple of things I want to highlight. First of all, our city attorney has been getting calls from citizens of Hot Springs asking various questions. And I just wanted to remind everyone that those calls are not authorized. If they are not authorized by the city to incur charges, those individuals making those calls will be responsible if we are billed for those calls. The cost incurred will be billed to the caller. Also, we did just today get a report from D E N R concerning our maintenance site, dump facility. One of the things that I would be referring to Public Works is looking at really if we do have a need for animal burial pit, if we do have one of those within our facility. And we're the only city in the state that has one. And one of the things that it is very difficult to monitor that because we don't have a way to monitor people using that. And after each carcass is placed in that pit, it's to be covered with six inches of soil. And if our, I hate to be gruesome, but if our folks don't get there by the end of the day to put that covering on, we have animals, fox, titans, night pines and so forth that feed on those. So one of the things that we'll be looking at is whether we as a city really need such a, be the only city in the state of South Dakota to utilize such a thing. Fire department came in today, wants to burn the cattails. We'd like to see using alternate methods. I would like your input as a council to determine whether within the next week or so, we would authorize the burning as a way of controlling those again this year. As you know, it just seems to fertilize the situation and obviously, we need to, we have plans to upgrade particularly Long River Street, that area, to make it more attractive so that people can get down and utilize the warm water Fall River. Recent retail roundtable, I want to thank both the Star and the Herald for covering that, the press coverage. One of the things that was brought up by the retailers downtown is that they thought that a trolley, a downtown trolley would benefit our retail even prior to the road construction to get people used to using that. And Prairie Hills Transit read that article, stimulated some interest. And so they are working with the chamber and add future, one of those roundtables will be looking at possibly adding some kind of trolley to downtown. But I think that's an important thing for us to get businesses' roots established prior to the road construction. One of the other disturbing things that we did find out today, and I don't know, Bill, if I've had an opportunity to share with you on the airport, but our fuel concessionaire submitted a notice of 60 days that they will be getting out of, offering fuel at our airport. That obviously is a very serious setback for the airport if we don't have an opportunity to have someone take that, either take that concession over or the city take it over. The reason I'm bringing that up tonight is because that's a council decision that has to be made, this council will have to make within 60 days what we do with that facility. So again, I would encourage everyone to get smart on that, that we make a good wise decision. Obviously, an airport without the capability to fuel aircraft is a dying airport. We will be losing customers left and right and particularly those people flying into, on cross countries and so forth that stop and utilize our airport and even people that rent an airplane or use our, use our airport for their own individual airplanes. Can you imagine if somebody used the example of going into a grocery store and not having any groceries? And so that's kind of what we were facing there and I just want to make the council aware of that. And finally, I just again want to reiterate how much I appreciate you as a council and the way that you tackle, tackle the issues that come before us. There've been several contentious issues this past couple of weeks and I think it's been handled in particular with grace, ease, compassion, both by the council and the city staff. And so, Misty, Kim, particularly Kim, I'd like to have you pass on to our department heads and people how much we appreciate the professionalism they've exhibited in some of these contentious situations. And likewise to the council for your rolling up your sleeves and not backing away and digging in and finding facts. Very much appreciated. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. It's been moved in second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, meeting is adjourned.